So who wants to do it tonight? You wanna do it tonight, Paul?
You go ahead, Paul.
You got this, Paul.
I'm still new.
You still new?
We got the veteran back.
We'd like to open the meeting tonight at seven oh three. And everybody, if you have cell phones, put them on mute. And the exits is up to the right and to the left. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New business. Long Steven. Area variance fifteen, lock cart. They're seeking a... Well, the area var- the variance is seven foot. So they're looking for a six-foot extension of the fence to- height. It's thirteen.
Seven-foot variance.
Seven, oh, okay, you had a way around. I was saying, I go with seven or six, six and seven. Looking for a seven-foot variance. Doubling this, over doubling the height required. If you didn't, I don't know, what kind, what kind documents you wanna support with?
Neighbor's been arrested, had a training.
Yeah, I mean, I wrote something if you wanna hear it.
You don't think a six-foot fence will stop them from coming over?
No, it's she.
She looks over the fence, she's tall, and she actually comes around the end of the fence.
This is five years now. This is because they put their fence on our property.
So, but, this is, we'd like to replace our existing fence with a thirteen-foot fence to block our neighbors. For five years now, we have, which, my husband has taken the brunt of harassment, stalking, intimidation, nonstop.
Twenty-five police phone calls.
We have confronted them on numerous occasions, and they refuse to stop, even after an arrest.
We're the victims of their crimes, not the other way.
I've had enough of them trying to interject themselves into our lives. So I had my husband put up a portion, or I actually had to put up a portion already. And what a difference it made. Like, I just felt peace. Nobody's staring at us, nobody's shining lights on us. It was like, it was my backyard. I ca- I mean, I don't know how else to express it. It was like, when I go out there, and it was just like, it's like you're, you're waiting, like you're tense, like you know that's, they're gonna do something. You know they're gonna come out, and you know, now when I have that fence and I'm down there, it's like, I don't see anybody. I don't see that.
It removes their control.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, who, did you get a variance to put the first fence up?
Um, we had a fence up. This is a, this is a repair replacement of a fence.
Well, the fence, the bottom piece is on the wrong side.
Uh, well, show them the finger. We had a three, we had a three-foot this on, on our fence for three weeks, in front of a school, so, I don't, we're, you know, we, we're not gonna, we're willing not to deal with nothing.
What do you mean it's on the wrong, oh.
No, they want it flipped around. Who says that? Where does it say that?
Okay, yeah, there's, there's our pictures, yeah.
Yeah, this'll be helpful.
And you could see, you could actually see, I had him actually, because they have a porch, like, they're both raised ranches. And so, when you come out, she would be right there, you could see them, and now with that there, it blocks.
This is for blocking.
It's real, it is, that's what it's, it's blocking them.
Yeah. Twenty-five times the police have been at my house, twenty-five times.
Just for clarification, which house is yours?
Ours is on the other side.
You can't really see, it's on the right.
Right, where, that's their house.
That's their house that we see mostly?
Yes.
Okay, good, I just wanna make sure we're clear on it.
Yeah, that, that's their house we see. We used, we literally had tarp at one point.
Thirty feet in the air, a hundred fifty feet long during COVID. This is in front of a school. This was in front of the school, a three-foot finger on a flag.
I mean, I have a picture of that, too.
So we're not really concerned about their feelings about anything.
No, see, we were.
So legally, like, so, but legally, yeah, we're gonna block them no matter what you say, cuz you're, you're gonna, we're not gonna listen to you.
Well, what I'm gonna say is, in a characteristic of the neighborhood, this will not fly.
Okay, but what about the three-foot finger? Should I just put that back up?
That's what they put up on us, the, the shining of, you know, the characteristic of the neighborhood, it's also of my mental.
This is affecting the whole neighborhood.
One at a time, please.
All right, it's also, it's also of our mental health.
This is going on for five years now.
It's not just the neighborhood. Nobody sees this except us. This is in our backyard, so nobody sees this between the two of us.
Yeah, this is in the front.
You know, it's not, this is not in the front. Nobody can see this. And to me, it's, I can't tell you, I can't tell you, once I had him put that up.
Yeah.
I just felt.
They lost control.
That's what it was.
Can I ask a question to clarify? The existing fence, the wooden fence right there, is that on your property?
Yes, we both have surveys.
And it, and you put up that fence, right?
Yes.
Okay, and where is the fence that you said she put up?
She has a fence.
She didn't?
She, they have a fence on the other side, they have, um, a chain link fence.
Chain link fence, and is that on your property?
Not anymore, they had, we had them move it.
Okay, understood that. Um, and it sounds like there's a lot of issues here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But unfor- fortunately and unfortunately, we are just the zoning board.
Yep.
So, we have to follow our guidelines, and we have to take those things into consideration. Totally understand it's a big issue, um, but we have to look at our guidelines and see what can be done.
That's what we're here for, and that's what we're, that's what we're, we're saying, okay, what can we do now?
And what we'll eventually get to is, is a thirteen-foot fence your only solution to, to this issue, right? Because it's one, it's one option, so that's what we'll, that's what we would have to do, our balancing to, you know, that, so, there's, there's a, there's a lot to consider.
Yes, there is a, um, and the length of this fence, would you just mediate it so that, um, if you put up, let's say, let's say, five feet more, just from the porch on an angle, they wanna catch the back of your yard a little bit? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll have it, we're not gonna have it, we're not gonna go all the way down the property line, we're just gonna go there.
Yeah, it's, it's not going all, it's not.
I can't, I can't.
We're not going all the way down.
No, no, we're not going all the way down. It's just to block that one section, it's a section, it's a one-block section.
Also, they, they have these two war dogs. Once the dog barks, she comes flying out, and she's like, you can't be in your yard. At one point, I didn't go to that side of my yard for two and a half years, because it was so constant with the police. We just gained property, we just went, my wife said, you know what, go back there and take control of the property again. This has been five years. They're the ones that stole our property.
She, I mean, she has a problem with us over there.
And she was arrested.
And she, she, you know, she told the officer.
And it's going back there again.
That we're making unnecessary trips in our yard.
The dog barks, it's like, she said that, y- you're disturbing my dogs. These are two, like, war dogs. That's why they had to put that fence up. But this has gone on for way, just way too long. This is not normal anymore.
I understand that, but this fence is permanent.
Yep.
Well, the fence is permanent until, like.
Until we can leave or get it under control.
Until we move, or, you know, something they wanna, you know, then we'll take it down. It's not like, okay.
And right there, there was a thirty-foot tarp.
We had a thirty-foot tarp going all the way down.
Straight up, a hundred fifty feet to the street.
I have pictures of it.
In front of the school. This is all in front of the school. They can't see this, but the other, the other stuff, with the finger, the school saw that. An elementary school.
I don't know if you wanna see the pictures, that's up to you.
But this is just, we're just trying to block, just get them out of our life. This has gone on for just way too long. It's cost taxpayers thousands with the police and everything else.
I just can't.
It's just too much, too long. Cuz you're, the, the police are gonna come back and, it's all gonna start up again.
If you wanna see them.
It's not, you're not gonna.
No, I mean, I understand what you're, but I have to also see my mental health, and I, you know.
No, but see, the fence law's been in there for ages, and we restrict it. It's always been just a six-foot fence.
Yeah, in the neighborhood.
And if it, if it was a, um, a board battening, or wood, or metal, or anything, there's a restriction on the height, and if we turn around and grant a thirteen-foot fence, and it's out of the characteristic of the neighborhood, it's just gonna, it's not, it's almost out of our parameters, you know what I mean?
But what can we do for right now? What can we do?
How can we get?
I mean, can, can it be like a temporary fence? I mean, this fence can be put back down. It's not like a, you know, it's just.
Well, something goes up, something goes up, something never comes down.
That's not true.
Well, in this town, there's a lot of.
That, where, me and, like, my husband's in construction. We do this kind, there's different things we do all the time. The house, it can come up, it can come down. Right now, this, this fence works, and it, it, I, I don't know what's, I don't know what else to say. I just don't.
Well, I tell you right now, I can't, I have to look at this.
Go around here.
Yes.
Which side, which, the good side is facing which side of the property line?
That's, we are, we already explained, that has to be changed.
That has to change?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I think we, we all should go take a.
That top part, right now, has been put down, though, where you see those boards going across?
Yeah.
And the, and the, the, with the, the rag top part?
Yes.
That was taken down, we did get a call, we took it down. So we still, right now, have just the.
Yeah, but, like, keep it.
But even that, when he had that up, that made a huge difference, because they're on the second porch there, and it was just, when I come, when I come out of my porch, there they are, sitting.
They've watched us for ten hours before.
They could do that for, yeah, all day long.
And it started with the phones, too, right? Wait, a year with the phone, right? So I started filming them with my phone, first time she called the police. Twenty-five times with the police. Maybe you should chat with the police, too, cuz it's gonna be going back to this.
And we're just trying to, we're just trying to avoid it.
If you can't allow us to do this, we're gonna do something in a little further.
I mean, that's what we're asking, can we do something else?
Is that your concern? Can we bounce in a couple feet, right up, boom, bye? Where's your control end? Because this is, this is your, you, you need to step out of this. This is beyond.
It's bad.
All right, this is five years. This is a restraining order, an arrest. She is waiting to get me arrested. We're playing a game now.
And so we're trying to block, we're trying to block them.
So we're blocking them. We have a legal right to block us. All illegal activity.
You know?
This is at a point of, like, come on.
We're trying to avoid the situation.
If you're not gonna give us this, we're gonna put something else in a little closer, off, off the fence. That's not a fence, right?
If we put something.
Cuz this is at a point ridiculous. I'm not, we, we, you know, no.
Yeah, I think what we need to do is, we need to just get, uh, like.
I gotta talk to Paul.
We need, yeah, we need to talk to the attorney, okay, and we need to talk to, and we, we probably need a little bit more information.
Do you want some pictures?
Yeah, give them the picture of the finger.
I'll, I'll, we can look at the pictures, but, um, we will need, like, formal, more information to make a decision on this, and there's a, so the process is that they bring it here, right? And then, um, we have to, tonight, we, we will not be making a decision, right?
No, we can't.
I'm just curious, if they put a thirteen-foot-high tent, five feet off the property, would that work?
Yep, please, something.
Well, we have to, we have to.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, the netting. Yeah, that's what we're gonna, we, we gotta do something.
We could do that.
Cuz we, yeah, it was on today, before we came in.
Well, I have to do my homework, I have to do homework.
So we are gonna ask our attorney what is legally feasible and what's within regulations.
Yeah, we gotta put a stop to this.
And, um, then we can, we're, we can give them suggestions on what they can legally do.
Well, I wanna give, I want Paul to give us the suggestion.
That's what I mean, not, yes.
And then when you come back next month, we'll have a definite answer to you.
Perfect.
Okay.
But number one issue, it has to be corrected. The fence's gotta be turned around.
Okay.
All right, just, just put the poles on yours, just turn the fence around and put the poles on your side of the fence.
And reduced. It has to be six feet until we make a determination. So you gotta, gotta have six feet, clear.
All right.
How about eight feet?
Well, we can't until they do their thing. You're not listening, you're not listening until they make a decision.
We can't make that change at this point. At this point, we can only support the rule.
I gotta talk to.
We're gonna screen or something, yep.
I just, it's, it's.
Yeah, it is, right now, it's sometimes.
There are, there are legal privacy, uh, uh, materials that you can use that aren't a thirteen-foot fence, so I think that's what we have to, we have to look into for you.
We're not looking, the, the issue is, number one, a fence. Number two, we wanna get a clarification, what you can do legally to give yourself privacy. Now, if you can put up, uh, say, uh, six feet off that fence, I see, on your property, a curtain.
Yeah, I have a curtain on the front.
Well, that's, but I understand. I'm just gonna, I have to, we have to check all, all the, all, all the angles.
I'm sorry, this is, this is very.
No, I can't, I can't, I, I don't think there's any way that we are possible. If you had a junkyard next door, or something of that sort, um, I would definitely, we'll, we'll, we'll probably would make a, maybe give you another, maybe net a two feet, but, but not triple, no. You see where I'm, where I'm coming from, we're not trying to.
Your hands are tied a little bit.
We're trying to find common ground with everybody, that's what this board is for. To keep it in, legally, keep it in place, and plus, we have real tight rules that we play. I've been on this board over thirty years, and, uh, we compromise quite a bit, but the, I never seen this.
Well, I've never seen this either.
Yeah, we never seen this, and I'm from a city. I've never seen this.
I've never encountered something like this in my life.
So this is after an arrest, too. You'd think you would just stop talking and, but it's not stopping.
You're not the only one in this town that happens to. We have people that live on a, a common drive, driveway. Person encroached on the easement, they had, they brought out firearms, and police department restraining orders.
Well, we've had that, we've had that.
Legal cases, for the legal cases, I think they ran on for six years. But it's all things that we have to check our box, you know, everything's gotta be.
Yes.
On and up and up. We'll try, we'll try to find out definitely for you by next month.
Thank you.
Exactly what we can do and what we can't. I know the thirteen-foot fence is.
Yeah, I think we're saying the variance, requesting the variance is not the, is not probably the most efficient, um, way to solve this, the variance, cuz you likely won't get it, so, but we will provide some guidance.
If we can provide alternatives or guidance from our attorney.
That's what we'd like to get, so at least we could do something.
All right?
Yep.
Do okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month, same time, same place.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so that was all new business.
I wanna just take a second here and look at these pictures.
Oh, she left them?
Oh, she did. Well, maybe she won't, I think she.
We'll put them in the folder.
Yeah, yeah.
Paul?
Yes?
Go here. Hey, did they get a permit to do that, to start with?
They get a permit to put a fence up?
Yeah.
Not the original.
Not the thirteen-foot-high one, no.
No, six-foot?
Uh, I believe so, but I would have to check our records upstairs.
Okay, I, I'm almost sure they got the six-foot, but they have it backwards.
Oh, you had a permit for a six-foot, but he wants to go seven?
No, they wanna go seven feet above that.
Well, thirteen?
Yes.
So, whoa, man.
And the light shining on, that, they could call the cops on that light anytime they want. There's no lights allowed to be shined.
So who's, who's, who's garbage is that in the back, in the background now?
Well, that's, you know, that's normal.
That's theirs? Is that theirs?
Well, that was, clearly, there's a lot of them.
People will learn to live together. My God, things are tough enough now.
It's not structural.
But you know, to go thirteen-foot, if you had a really nasty wind come through, and part of that fence went over on their, on, onto their neighbor's house.
You definitely have a point.
Yep.
But, uh, we are, the fence is out.
Yeah.
Thirteen, I, I, I can't see where we can grant a thirteen-foot fence.
No, no, I, I can't either.
Yeah, everything we have, that's against.
We're not even giving them a little bit. This is over the top.
Where is it on that part? Like you come in and the app places here, and the school's here.
A thirteen-foot is gonna put darn near as high as the house is.
It's on, um. Across the street from the, the old, uh, our old supervisor's house, basically, um. Lock Cart's house is on the corner, and this is about three houses to the, right.
Kind of, yeah. Yeah, there, right there.
Well, I think I'm gonna go on a road trip anyway. So, we're basically putting this off to next month. Everybody in favor?
Yes, I.
Yes.
Bye.
Oh, yeah, when do we reconvene?
No, we just, we, we told them we'd bring them back and hopefully have some alternatives.
And if we wanted to vote on it.
So we're, we're not gonna invite the public to convene.
No, we're not ready for that yet.
I don't think we're ready, yeah, I'm gonna hear from Paul, like, from him, I agree.
No, I think Paul, no, not that, he's gonna get a.
We'll email Paul in the morning to touch base and let him know what happened.
Is that strictly residential where he is, right?
Excuse me, sir?
Strictly residential, yes.
Strictly residential.
Yeah, okay, well, in that, uh, there's something I remember seeing in the town code that, uh, there's a height limit to things.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, six feet.
Uh-huh.
How do you say, sis?
Facility.
Facility?
You wanna come up here, sir? Eighteenth Falcon Drive? Looking for a variance of twenty-three feet for a side yard to build a garage.
Should I just go through the same thing as last time? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I like to see, uh, you have a sketch of the, your.
I do.
I don't have anything. I'm sorry about that, but.
I think she has it up on the screen.
All right, now, um. Now, eighteen's on the right-hand side or left-hand side? You come in drive.
Oh, you go down to the cul-de-sac if you make a right.
Go down to cul-de-sac to make a right, and you're over in the back?
Yep, West House.
Okay. All right, that's the driveway, and that's the cul-de-sac?
Yep.
And... You got, what is that, eleven feet on the front corner?
Uh, yep, so eleven, seven, two, uh, the front side of the garage to Mr. Rosa's property.
And nineteen in the back?
I can't see that far.
Huh?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yep, let me get that out here.
And the side yard setback is twenty-five?
Seventy-five point seven to the property.
Why, you're in the ag zone, right?
There was a reason you couldn't move it any further. What was that? Would you just state that for Paul?
So, yep, so, uh, if I were to move it to the right any further than, you know, two to three feet, I'd be looking at having to bring in about a hundred and...
You had to backfill and.
Yeah, it was a hundred and forty tons or a hundred and, a hundred and four cubic yards of material. Not to mention I'd have to use, uh, move my propane tank if I went, uh, all the way.
Right.
Um, which. Um, which, you know, was the additional cost? Uh, not to mention the whole idea of the garage is for storage, you know, for my boat, so I could, to make the turn, to put back the boat in, it would be, you know, almost impossible. So it would have to amend the front part of the driveway to be able to do that as well. Plus, for environmentally or for cosmetically, whatever you wanna call it, uh, it would just look better on the right side of the property. It'd be hidden by a berm that's kinda to the left, uh, where that eleven, seven number is, there's a berm there. Um, but we kinda hide the garage a little bit, which is what, what I'm trying to do, so.
But if you turned, you just slide that oil over to that, the arrow says the hundred and eighteen feet?
Where are you looking, sir?
Right next to your propane tank, let's say you put the backside against the propane tank.
Which you can't do, he's gotta stay so many feet away.
Five feet, I think it's still.
And that's a round, that shows the propane tank being, as being around, it's a torpedo.
Yeah, but what way does the torpedo go?
It goes toward, it'll be going pretty much the same way as the house.
Okay.
I ask the period, uh, plus propane come out and mark it for me, uh, as well as give me an estimate to move it.
But if, even though you turned the tank, you slide it all the way over, you can get your twenty-five feet. It's gotta be, how much?
Thirty feet, is what I was told.
No.
I'm sorry, thirty, thirty-five feet.
Side yard is thirty-five?
That's, that's what I was told, thirty-five feet.
No. From here to here is how much? Forty, you said forty?
Yes, yep. The garage would pretty much be up against the house at that point, unless I were to move it back towards the rear, the, the rear of the property, behind the propane tank, which would still require an additional amount of.
From here to here, you got a big fall.
Yes, well, it's not a big fall, but yes, it's a, it's about a five-foot drop, yeah. Where it sits right now is up on a ledge, which requires much less fill to come in.
There was a dry well or something near, near that.
Yeah, so that's the other thing, my, uh, there's a dry well right there, that dotted line, that's where my gutter drains are, my footing drains. I didn't put them there, that's just where the builder put them, so. The additional cost of, to move it over, just in excavation fees, would be another fifteen-five, I'm just trying to save that on here. Fifteen thousand five hundred.
I'd like to see more, more like twenty-five foot, uh, instead of, what was it, does the zone calls for fifty?
Thirty-five.
Thirty.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five, see a ten, a ten, ten, a variance of ten feet, plus or minus, would make a big difference in the overall picture. So it would be only like a five foot. It would make a big difference, ten feet more.
And why is that?
Well. Again, we don't know what the, anybody from the, uh, any from the public? What, all right, we'll come, we'll come to you real soon.
It's your decisions, you might not need to hear from me.
Huh?
Depends what your decision is, you might not need to hear from me.
Yeah, well, I'd like to get your input now, if it would help. Um. It's thirty-five?
As far as a neighbor that affects, he's, he's for the project, he's on Zoom.
Well, it's, it's one of the neighbors.
He, he's behind me.
He's behind you? He's on Zoom? So, we require thirty-five. And we got up there eleven, eleven-five. So we're looking at twenty-three point three, all right. Yeah. I, if we can get that down to thirteen point five, I, I would like to see that, I would like to see that kicking in.
In which direction, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
If he slides it off the property line, just the way he has it.
Uh-huh.
Right towards the propane tank, ten feet, he has forty feet now. From that, that corner on his driveway, towards the house, he's got forty feet. And that's just in line, I'm saying the tank is about another five feet going that way. So he'll be still from the tank, he'll still be thirty feet from the house, he'd be about twenty feet from the tank. So, if he can just slide it over ten feet more.
To the right, that's the way we're looking at it.
Yes, yes.
It would be more visible from the road, as well as increased excavation cost.
Can we actually see those, Sarah, do we have those pictures?
Yeah, the picture's kinda made more sense.
I'm just checking so we can kinda look at that again from a month ago, to see the road view, as we talked about where the spot is.
Okay. So, the way we're looking at it right now is, you're proposing that you'd like it to the right of the boat?
Correct, so where the boat is, go, if you, you just moved your marker, but that's okay. So where the boat is to the left of the boat, if you're standing right there, is pretty much where that left front corner of the garage is, would, would be, right about there.
Left front, ten feet more.
Ten feet the other way.
Be more visible from the cul-de-sac.
It would be more visible from the cul-de-sac.
It'd be characteristic neighborhood, the one that, five feet from, uh, twenty feet from his cul-de-sac, there's a guy got a three-bay garage sitting right out on the side. It would be still behind this house and then I, I, I feel it'd be more environmentally.
I mean, I'm, Sarah, I, I don't mean to speak out of line, but I live there every day, I feel like it would look better environmentally, it would be over to the right, it would, it would, if you were going with characteristics, it would flow better with the neighborhood, that's me personally. Uh, additionally, I would have to bring in fill, which of course is another environmental, uh, you know, impact, as well as, you know, then take up my footings or my, my footing drains as well, all right? Which is another environmental impact.
Why couldn't you go over them?
I would, well, what happens if, if they break?
Then you would have to dig them up, for, that, instead of digging them up, after the leaves get them in ten years from now, you can do it ten years now and put a new one in and you'd be in all good shape. I'm not, I'm not going there, uh, footing drains are not very important.
Not to mention it, it takes apart more, it takes away more from my backyard for my kids, so.
Well, uh.
And, and I know, I, but I'm, it's just the totality of the circumstances, you know what I mean?
I understand, I understand, I'm not trying to be hard here, but this is, this is a two-way street.
Yeah, I understand, is there any other reason beside, like, what's the main reason?
Uh, it's reducing the impact of the, of the setback.
Of the, of variances.
Of the variance, if we can get ten feet more and we mediated it within that general area, I feel that, I really, uh, I really, if it's possible to do, I don't know why we can't do it. I don't know, how you feel?
So, what you, what you're saying is it's a less significant variance that you'd be requesting, from what is already legally, legally and in the zoning code. So that's, that's a consideration, that's part of our balancing checks, that's one of the things that we check. Um, the, I had a question about, you said, um, the fill would create an environmental, uh, what, what's the environmental?
You bring in and fill from an outside area, I mean, anytime you move any type of fill, you're, you're risking bringing something to the area not supposed to, even if it's clean fill, I, you know? Even if you go from a local person, anytime you do that.
Hmm. Um.
Before I did this, I also did some comparisons to other variances that, uh, came across the town Lloyd. You know, I, I saw some all, all the way down to, I think like six or eight feet off the property.
It depends on the, on.
In, in ag, uh, in ag zone, um, you know, and again, I, I, I know every project is different, I, I understand that, I get that, right?
Doesn't the house in the cul-de-sac have its own separate garages? Isn't there, isn't the house in the cul-de-sac?
If you're talking about the house across from mine, if you were looking at it straight ahead.
If you went down your driveway and hung it right.
Yeah, so he's got, yeah, he has a.
He's got great big garages or some sort.
Yep, he's got a three-car garage, that's what he does.
He had no problem.
Cause we also, we also look to tie in the neighborhood, make sure it's part of the neighborhood.
Yeah, so I, I can't go to the other side of my house because I have a, a environmental easement, if you go back to the, um, thank you, I appreciate it. There you go, so there's a conservation easement, um, Dan was able, my neighbor, he was able to get around that, right? Um, however, I, I, you know, I can't, um, not to mention, I wouldn't wanna put it on outside the house, obviously, I'm not gonna put a garage in front of my house due to variance reasons, as well as.
You wouldn't get one in front of the house.
And it wouldn't, right?
I, I just, eh, I think it would be. If we, if it's possible, I would like to go that way, make, if it's feasible.
I mean, uh, it's, it's at a pretty big cost to me, which, you know, I'm a, you know, a town resident.
Well, it's a cost to a lot of people, uh, everybody has their own little project and there's always a number on it.
I, I understand that.
Um, I don't know, I like.
Is there any other reason besides reducing the impact of the variance itself?
Yes, basically, yes.
Is there any other reason?
Um, no, I don't think so, I don't see anybody else how they feel, how you feel.
I've driven back there, I've looked at it, um, driving down the cul-de-sac, seeing the building that he mentioned, his neighbor, looking where that is in relation to his house, I didn't obviously take measurements. When I look at that position with the berm and the way the slope and the grade, everything looks, I would say where it is, is gonna be less noticeable, not talking about in terms of what the variance number would be. I would say it's gonna be much less noticeable there, closer to his property line, obviously, than if you slide it over, I think it's, it's gonna stand out more. When you look at whether it's vegetation and or the grade, just from looking at it from the road, um, that, that was what I got from the pictures and then doing, you know, driving.
You have a choice, you can, on the roadside, on the, on the right-hand side coming up the driveway, you can always put some foliage on that corner. You, when you come around that corner, you won't even see the side of the building, you only see the, the narrow part of that eighteen-foot of the garage door, the garage front. Of that, whatever that side, you, that, that would be the garage door facing the driveway, right?
Yeah, you just pull right into it.
Yeah, pull right into it, so if, if you put some kind of, uh, pine trees on that, in that twenty-one foot piece there, um, you wouldn't even see the side of the building, and from the other side, you never see it anyway. I think it'd work out, you can always do something, if, if it's gonna be high, you can almost put small shrubs with the berm coming up that driveway with a small hedge coming off there, you would never see the side of the garage, with.
So right now it's clear, uh, so that the town plow trucks can make the turn and they, they utilize pretty much a gravel area up there. Um, so I wouldn't put anything up there, cause it's gonna take a, it's gonna, it's gonna affect your, your town trucks, not to mention, we get deliveries from FedEx and eighteen-wheelers and things like that, so it's still another, uh, piece of property in development that needs to be built and they can't turn around as it is, they use the driveway, so I wouldn't do anything like that to block that off the cul-de-sac or the, um.
You can do it right next to the building.
Were you talking about farther up, I'm sorry, I, I'm thinking you're talking about down.
Right up, right at the corner, instead of, you can put like five pine trees in there and four years, you'll never see the side of that building. They'll, they'll, they'll grow like wire fire. Uh, I'll open the, the meeting to the public.
Want me to step down? Would you like me to step down?
No, you just, you can stay, you wanna come up and say something, sir? What your recommendations would be for your neighborhood? Yeah, you had to state your name, we, we, we've seen you in the past.
Seen me in the past, right, what are we doing, Trevor DePue, Four Eagle Court?
I'm in, uh, back there a little bit.
You're in my side yard.
I'm in your side yard.
Yeah, working for, you know, contractor, I wouldn't name anybody.
No, but I, I've been there, I've been visiting.
Yeah, so you see what it looks like?
Um, he'd be on the other side of you, right?
He's technically in the front.
He's in the front of you?
Mm-hmm.
To the right of, you come out of your house, be on the right hand.
To the right, the second one, correct, correct. You know, basically, it's nothing against my neighbor, um, I'm just here to see that this board, you know, sticks to, you know, prior decisions, you know, based on prior decisions of, you know, the board has made, that they just, uh, you know, stick within the guidelines, you know? Looks like there's plenty of room to move this garage, you know? Yes, does it cost money? Yes, you know, but there's room on the other side of the house, you could turn it sideways, move it closer, you could leave it this way, move it closer to the house. If you look at Twenty-One Falcon, he's got the same setup, only the garage is, the additional garage is right next to the house.
Right.
You know? That would remain within the characteristic, you know? That's just my concern, is to make sure, you know, there's no point in giving a variance if one's not needed, you know? Um, as Mr. Cecily's attorney, you know, quoted at the May meeting, he just wants everyone to play by the rules, so I just want everyone to play by the rules.
I understand where you're coming from, I'm just trying to mediate the variance. So instead of giving him a twenty-three foot variance, I'd rather give him a thirteen foot variance. It'd be more.
I understand that, his concern is the cost, and I full-heartedly understand that because.
Cost does not come into.
Because I have an additional cost to do what I wanna do.
Yeah, hardships on dollar value, it depends on the scope of the work.
Like I said, there's nothing against my neighbor, I'm just wanna make sure the board is.
Within reason of what.
Or just, you know, the, like I said, there's other spots you could put this garage, like you said, move it closer to the house. He could go on the other side, he would have to put in an additional driveway, yes, if he went to the other side, you know? I understand why he doesn't wanna move it closer, but, you know, like you said, you could move it closer. I understand his concern about the footing drain, but when you go to dig for the, um, footings for the garage, you could move the footing drain.
It's just, that, that, that footing drain is immaterial to the scope of the job.
No, I know that, yeah, but it's movable.
It's, yeah, every, everything is movable.
Of course, yeah, you can move a house these days if you wanted.
The, the propane tank could be moved.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm not pushing him to put it all the way back towards the propane tank. I'll, you know, I'm trying to get re, uh, common ground here, you know, mediate the hardship both ways.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I think the extra ten feet would make a big difference, instead of thirty-five feet, you're gonna have, um, you're gonna have, uh, thirteen feet instead of twenty-three. It even gives a bigger barrier between you and a neighbor or anybody else.
Well, that, I'm like, if you look at the, if you could pull up the map. So, if you're looking at the back of it, I'm the seventy-five feet, I'm behind that.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Doesn't know, not big.
The one that's to the side, that's okay with the project, he's the one who didn't want me to build the house three hundred feet from his house, he's okay with the garage fifty feet from his house, though. So, you wanna mediate, but I got no mediation when I was here, just pointing that out.
Well, there was, this is apples and oranges, okay?
Listen, um, every case is different, just like, you know.
Every case is different.
I understand that.
I understand, I have no, I'm not taking no, no sides here at all.
And like I said, I'm not trying to give anyone a, a hard time, like I said, nothing against my neighbor, I hope he puts it up, you know?
We're all in agreement that we're here to follow the zoning laws.
Correct.
We're, we're okay with that.
So if there's somewhere to move the garage, then there shouldn't be a need for a variance.
That's, we have made no decision on that.
I just heard thirteen feet's better than twenty-three.
Sure, it's an idea.
It's an idea, I, I, I make a proposal yet to vote on.
I understand that, but just, if there's room to move it, then within the guidelines, then there's really no need for one. I understand that, but just, if there's room to move it, then within the guidelines, then there's really no need for one, that's all. So instead of wasting Mr. Sicily's time.
Um, I really don't want, I don't know, except the board members to give out more suggestions.
Yeah, I think this has to remain open.
There's someone on the demo.
Oh, well, they're raising their hand. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So I'm the neighbor that they're discussing right now, that lives directly to the eleven-foot side of the property. I'm at Fourteen Falcon, my name is James Rosa.
Okay.
So what we're talking about is exactly apples and oranges. When Mr. DePue was there, he was attempting to put a house at a spot that was not zoned for a house. This is talking about putting a garage that doesn't impact the yard as much. It's thirteen feet versus thirty-five feet. The only person that this impacts is myself and my wife. And the thirteen feet is not going to change anything versus thirty-five feet. A giant house that was going to get put behind our property was an impact, which is why we spoke up against Mr. DePue. This is a garage that we're talking about twenty feet here, give or take, right now. That's not going to change anything. So the thirteen feet, I don't have a problem with. It's going to cause less problems over there. He's going to have to do less excavation, there's going to be less water movement. But when I was talking about a house that was going to impact everything in my backyard, then yes, that was a problem. Or we're talking about a garage right now for a whopping twenty feet for a variance. So in theory, we could move the property line twenty feet. That would cost money, though, that would be silly. And nothing would change, the garage would still go in the same spot. So I don't have a problem with it because it's twenty feet for a garage, variance, that he's not going to have to jump through a whole ton of more hoops and then lose another additional twenty feet of his backyard.
Uh, I'm not looking for twenty feet.
Well, even thirteen feet. It's more hidden the way it is now. If you have, if you would like to come see what it looks like from my side of the property as well, you're welcome to come up, just give us a call. The spot where it is is a natural berm, when you come up and over both of our driveways, the property then dips back down. So where it is right now, it's going to be hidden. Start moving it out, it's going to be obviously more visible. But we're talking about twenty feet right now, that the variance is needed. I think thirteen's a waste of time. You're going to be moving it, you're going to lose thirteen more feet of the yard for no reason. The variance is there so that people don't put things on the line without neighbors' permissions. So I have no problem with an eleven-foot, he's able to get into the eleven-foot and get around his house. So there's no problem there.
All right, thank you. So where do you want to go with this?
Uh, I think it needs to remain open.
Okay.
And I think we need to, I mean, make sure that everyone's seen it in person. I ha- I hadn't, um, thought about ten feet over as a, as an option, so I would have to go see what that looks like. Um, but not so much, because what it looks like doesn't matter. But it, it's, it's how it's compliant with the variance, is that correct?
Correct.
We're not really concerned with visibility because that's not changing the character of the neighborhood. There's already garages that are out in the open. We're not trying to hide anything visually, so that's not a factor. It's about the, the, within the variant.
Scope of the variance.
Yeah, the scope of the variant, yeah, yes. And, and also the environmental issues with the, uh, the existing tank and all in that. Ag, yes, all of that, those are valid things that we must consider.
Right.
So I think we just need to. We would need to, uh, see what ten feet in the other direction, what, what that would do for the situation. Would it make it worse, would it make it better in terms of the factors that we need to consider? Um, and see if it is a better and valid option.
Yeah, I understand. What, what's your feeling?
Same thing, I think we need to keep the public hearing open.
Okay.
We can always close it and take a vote next, next time.
Mm-hmm, yes.
May I make a just.
Give everybody a chance to come up with better ideas or not, you know?
And see what the options, eh, what the implications of those options are. I'm unclear as to, you know, exactly what would be better about either scenario.
Just, the only thing I, I was thinking here, making notes, the only thing I would like to add again, uh, either way, no, no trees have to be cut, right?
No, 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 no.
Right, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm reassuring you guys.
Not touching your borderline.
No, I'm saying, no, no trees have to be cut where the.
He's saying he's not cutting any trees.
I'm not cutting any trees, uh, if, if it was to go where the variant, you know, where I suggested it to go, um, it would require a lot less extra fill, right, for that environmental issue and it would be hidden. I'm just making a closing statement, just to reassure my, uh, what I said before, that's all, sir. I'm not trying to argue.
I'm not trying to hide, I'm not trying to hide.
I'm just trying to, just, just trying to reassure them.
I'm trying to mediate the variance.
Yeah.
Okay?
I got you.
Um. It's, you're asking for a considerable variance.
Considerable amount.
Like you, the man next to you said it, and the board can say it, that we could ask you to push it back thirty-five feet, right up to the corner, make you move the propane tank, but we're not here to force the issue. So we, if we can mediate it to a point that it would be less impact on the variance. Where we're more favorable with our decision. And it's more characteristic of what we are going, our goals are.
I understand. The only thing I could add that, before I did all this, I, I did do a little research into the zoning, it was some variances that were already.
We had, we, we, we used to see, at a minimum of twelve months, we used to see at least twenty variances on, on, um, sheds. So we made a outright boom. Five feet was the minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Until they came and said they had this, you, there's no way, you know what I'm saying? So we, we, sometimes we give a little bit more, but it's very, we don't even see sheds anymore. No, no, since we made that ruling. Now, shed's easy, all they got to do is pick it up and take it away. You know what I mean, this is a garage.
It's going to be a permanent structure.
Permanent structure. And, uh, I feel that, I feel that a thirteen-foot is less than a twenty-foot. And, and it could be even greater, it could be, we could make you go fifteen feet more, but make it less. I, I'm just putting out ten feet and we're all going to go take, take a ride out there again and we'll come back with a decision. But we're not going to close the meeting, we're not closing the public hearing. And we'll definitely come back, I'll, I'll talk to Paul, I have to talk to him about the other thing. And, uh.
This should be an easier conversation than your fence argument.
Huh?
This should be an easier conversation than the fence issue.
The fence, the fence is in our ballpark, in a, in experience.
I'm just making a joke.
Does not fly, it does, no, the six-foot fence is a six-foot fence and, um, all right. That's it, uh, so I'll see you next month, I hope I have better, better decision for you. But, uh, thank you for your input, appreciate it.
At the end of the day, we're not going to argue like the other two, I can promise you that. I'm still going to wave at him when he drives down the road and vice versa, all right? Like, I'm an adult. No, 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 no flags and no thirteen-foot fence, we're, we're gonna, we'll be fine.
It's even in this extra ten feet coming towards your house, the impact on the neighbor doesn't have anything bad to say about it.
Mm-hmm.
Would improve overall impact. Because if you look at an angle going like this, now he's got to go like that.
So the, just to touch on the angle, the angle comes because the house is angled, right?
No, 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 I mean, sight vision, from his backyard, he has no problem with the shed because it's on another piece of property to the left. Or whatever. I have to go see it, but it, the less impact on the, in overall.
It's winter time.
You're saying that it's on the side of his house as opposed to out the back? Because he was coming, saying he didn't want to see the house in the back of his house.
Yeah, well, now.
Well, now I got to look at a garage up in the front of my house.
You got to look at a garage in front of your house, right?
In my front yard, even though it's on his property.
In the front yard.
That was the big point, it was in his backyard, even though it's my front yard.
Right.
On my property.
Right. Even moving it over more, it takes it out of your front yard a little bit.
Little bit.
But I hate to say it.
Little bit.
The other side of that is, the way the variances are in the town, there is no other place to put the garage beside my backyard.
Well, there's a lot of places you can put that garage.
No, no matter what, it's going to be in his front yard, right? It, it doesn't matter if it's, it doesn't matter if the variance is approved.
We're not changing that.
So like I said, it's my front yard, but it's really his backyard, just like Mr. Rose had said, the house is in his backyard, but it's really my front yard.
If that lot was pre-approved with a road and it was a subdivision and there was a lot there, a two-acre lot, I'm saying there would be no way.
I understand that.
It will be denied.
And you know, that used to be four lots with a road. And we, we explained that.
Yeah, but.
We already went through all that.
We went all through it.
Just like Mr. Sicily doesn't, he wants to leave the garage where it is for cost. That's why I came for the variance, for cost, to save costs.
Right, right. So we're trying to mediate the overall impact.
So my question before was, again, mediate there, and I understand it's apples and oranges, but where was my mediation?
Well, we suggested some things, but it didn't work out.
What'd you suggest?
Your brother didn't want his house in the other place, right?
On my farm?
I don't know, I, I, again.
The suggestion was put it behind my house. But it doesn't matter, you still deny two flag lots, no matter where you, I put it.
Right, yeah, two, yeah, that's, that's, that was.
That was based on code?
No, based on code plus the impact. Now, if you had two flag, if you had a multi-use, uh, different location at a new development, um, I have seen two flag lots, well, we had one on Bellevue, they wanted a flag lot or two lots, but one house is going to be in back of the other one.
Yeah.
And we s- we mediated the front yard requirement, the requirement. So the both houses could be in line with each other.
Mm-hmm.
We eliminated a flag lot and it made it more appealing to, at the whole neighborhood. We here to work.
Yeah.
All right, um, not, we didn't take.
Listen, you're there every day, you come up with something better for me, okay?
For you? Yeah. That group of people behind you, they want to divide some of that property up that's towards the road. Now, you took that, you talked to them and you talked to yourself and all that and put a number together where, where it'd be economical to take your driveway and put it with their driveway and put a fifty-foot road in.
And put the roads back in, like the original plan?
And they'll get two lots, and I don't know how many you would be able to get. Your neighbor could get a lot in behind his house across the street. So there's a lot of things was, was done without seeing what's going to happen in the future. People don't want five-acre lots in, in a development because it's a waste of property. Environmentally, it's great, but then they all start saying, oh, man, if I could subdivide two acres out of this and get a lot, they all see the dollar signs. But it costs a lot of money to go the extra mile.
Mm-hmm.
But now, when you get next door, yourself, and three different people in the back, then you get a pool of money, not one individual has to go for the whole gamut. It could be discussed, I'm not saying it will be possible.
No.
But that road was put in for two reasons, would have been for two reasons. It would be safety and welfare of the neighborhood, you know? One of the houses on, out near the edge of your road catches on fire, you're going to have two, three fire trucks in the neighborhood and somebody down the end has a heart attack, what's going to happen then?
Yeah.
But there's a lot of possibilities, there's always a reason why and why not. We're not here to hurt anybody.
No, I know that.
I got on the board thirty years ago just to help people out. Because we had people sit on this board, the book was the book. It's not, that's not why we're here. We're here to, to help our community stay where it is and make things blend. All laws are meant to bend a little bit. So there again, I'm no speech, I want to go home, watch movies. No, um, I enjoy doing what I'm doing, this is my last four years. And, um, the next group here are going to take over.
I haven't even got to my five-page argument yet, though.
Five-page argument, now, you guys have a happy holiday and we'll see you next month. And, uh, I like your input.
Say, I'm not here to give Mr. Sicily a hard time, I'm here to give you a hard time.
Well, that's okay, I got bored shoulders, I got beat up, I got scars on my back.
I know.
The newspaper guy will be here picking on me, I don't care. But, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, have a good night, guys.
Make a motion, we just adjourned it and we'll put it on next month.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, next month.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I.
Agree, agree.
On what?
Post, just close the, close that part and keep it open and just for more discussion next month.
Public hearing stays open, right?
More discovery.
More discovery.
More discovery.
More discovery next month.
You see where I'm coming from?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I hadn't considered that and that's why I want to go see it because there's things that need to be, you know, there are environmental factors and, and there are, like, there's the, there's where it's allowed to be. And we don't have to just give twenty-three if, if there's a way to accomplish the same thing with less variance, like, that's our job.
I've been there several times with the other project.
Mm-hmm.
But I want to go back again with this one because it just, I always look to the area, what, what's continuous in the area.
What's it look like?
Yeah, yeah.
If a guy wants to put a rental in, I want to know what other rentals you mean, that neighborhood? He wants to put a garage in, I just want to see what did other people there do? If everybody's got it like, you know, on the borderline.
Yeah. And also, I mean, his, his argument is it's costly to put it elsewhere. There's an environmental issue with the, um, tank and he, he wants a big yard for the kids, you know? I, I, I get that, but we have to take into consideration what we have to, what, what we can do, right?
Right, right, but we always got to mediate it, it's, we.
If we can give a little, we, you know.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm not going for a whole bunch of canned worms.
Right.
This goes in the file.
We still have two things on the agenda.
We, yeah, we still have old business, that's why I was like.
All right, I wasn't here, so if somebody has to, uh.
We were here for it.
Review the old business, Joe Mizetti's. And you want me to sign it, right? Uh, you ain't getting me to sign it.
Actually, you can recuse yourself and give it to the acting.
Oh, this is the one that was pre, I'll sign it.
Yes, she will, she'll sign it.
Yeah, I'm going to, I want to say, I, I can't do nothing about this.
Thank you, okay. Why, you have beef with this guy? Um, where do I sign?
I like getting these people involved.
Where, do I sign on John Litz?
We got to read it first.
Oh, I thought we did it, okay. This whole thing?
We did a.
Just page two from starting where, Sarah, tell me.
Page two to whereas, correct?
Whereas.
Whereas, in applying the balance test and standards required by New York State Town Law Two Hundred Sixty-seven B Three B to the applicant's requested variance, the ZBA makes the following findings. Pursuant of New York State Town Law Two Hundred Sixty-seven B Three B One, granting the requested variance for the project would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the neighbors. There will be no visible change. There will be no visible change to the character of the neighborhood. No undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the neighbors will occur. Two, pursuant to New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B two, the benefits sought by the applicant from the project cannot be achieved in any feasible way without the requested variance. As a result, there is not another feasible method to achieve the applicant's goals without the requested variant, area of variance. Three, pursuant to New York State, uh, Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B three, the requested variance is substantial, but will not result in any environmental impact or detriment to neighbors. Four, pursuant to New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B four, granting the requested variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and will not cause any environmental impact to the surrounding neighborhood. There will be no visible change to the character of the neighborhood. Five, pursuant of New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B five, the applicant's need for the requested variance is a self-created difficulty. Whereas, pursuant to the above findings in New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B, the statutory balancing test demonstrates that the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community arising from granting the requested variance is outweighed by the benefits to the applicant of such grant. And whereas, the ZBA has the authority under zoning code one hundred and fifty-six in New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B to approve or disapprove the requested variance. Now, therefore, it, be it resolved, that based on the applicant's application and supporting information, including the project plans and the public hearing on the applicant's variance request, the applicant's request for a variance for the project is granted pursuant to New York State Town Law two hundred and sixty-seven B three B in zoning code one hundred and fifty-six. Be it further resolved, that this variance approval shall run with the land and shall bind any successor in interest to the applicant, and be it further resolved, that this resolution shall be filed with the town of Lloyd Town Clerk within five days of its adoption, and a copy sent to the applicant. And be it finally resolved, that this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption. Motion by?
Russ.
Ross.
Seconded by?
Okay. We've got Cory. Uh, the.
Got to have roll call.
What's that?
Got to have roll call.
What's roll call?
Unvote. Unvote.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so what does that mean, I'm sorry?
Do you basically go through and say each person's?
Oh, I'm sorry, I get it, I'm sorry.
No, no problem, no sorrys here.
I'm sorry. Uh, the foregoing resolution was voted upon with all members voting and signing as follows, John Litts.
Absent.
Absent. Paul.
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, William.
He's on Zoom.
He's on Zoom?
Zoom.
He's, can't vote.
Do you vote yes?
He can't vote.
Oh, he can't vote, because he's physically, okay. So, he's absent, or is he abstained?
I will talk to Paul on that one, I'm not sure.
Might be an abstain, but okay, Russ?
I vote yes.
Yes. Cory?
Yes.
Mike?
How come we have Mike Corro?
I don't know.
Mike Corro is on here to vote.
I did not vote for the resolutions, Jessica, you want to come and sign it later?
Cross that out, he's not a voting member.
Just tell me when to sign it. Okay, Sean's not here, he's absent, and Jessica is, yes. Um, okay, I will come sign it.
It'll probably be, I'll leave early tomorrow, so.
Just email me whenever, okay, so I can't sign it, but.
You walk down?
What? I'll walk down.
But I'll leave Monday.
I work from home Monday, that's fine. All right, so that, we're not, we're still not done.
Now, we got minutes.
Okay.
Can everybody read the minutes of the last meeting?
Uh-huh.
Do we have any changes?
No, thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as proposed? Cory, second?
Aye.
Jess? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's all we have.
Can we close it?
I make, I make a motion. You can make the motion.
You can make a motion.
I signed his motion.
Yes, he makes the motion. Aye? Nice.
We adjourned.
I hope, I hope we.